Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is Wednesday, May 11. Opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting at six fifty...
Six fifty.
And the first thing on our agenda is to make an appointment to the Building Committee. And at six o'clock, we will continue as all the members of the Building Committee come in to discuss where we're at. So you want to handle this? I'll make the motion.
Sure.
Acting as the Personnel Board, we have a petition for Kent Wilkins to join the Building Committee. The appointment is we selecting the town in Free Town by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Do we appoint Kent Wilkins to the Building Committee?
I'll make the motion to appoint Kent Wilkins to the Building Committee.
I have...I'll second that motion. I have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Obstained? Kent Wilkins is now...
Mr. Wilkins.
On the Building Committee.
Yep.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. So I got to get together with Jackie. We can do that tomorrow, right? Or you want to do it tonight if she's here?
Okay. So we're going to take a...
When Jackie...if Jackie's here, she'll swear you're in.
Yeah, okay.
We'll take a recess until six o'clock. We had opened the meeting a little bit earlier.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we're supposed to start at four o'clock.
You were?
No.
No, not...no. So we waited until about 10 minutes of...we opened it, we took that one action, and then we went to recess. So we're opening...we're coming back in from recess. And tonight, we're meeting for the second time for the Building Committee. Put together a Building Committee that's composed of, what, seventeen? Ally, seventeen people? And tonight, everybody should have in front of them a package that was dropped off today. Ally was kind enough to put it together for us. And this was dropped off by Sergeant Ben LeBeck and Sergeant Sweden Magnet. Sweden's going to hopefully get here tonight. He's working.
He's working.
And Ben could not make it tonight. So they're members of the Building Committee. We have some minutes that have to be approved. Let me see if I can find the minutes here. Do we have copies of the minutes here?
They were sent to you.
I think we are.
I don't remember.
Oh, Sweden is here. Come on, Sweden, sit down. How you doing?
We see you're seated near the door. You should run because of the bugger there.
Anybody...everybody seen the minutes that were sent electronically?
We just need one collection on spelling. It said water and sore. It should say on the second page, second paragraph. That's the only thing that I was suggesting.
And there is also another one.
One or two names.
On the paragraph that starts with Ben LeBeck, third line up, it's supposed to be heaters, not hereas.
What word did we just turn about?
It says freezing water dripping from ceiling because of broken pipes and the need to use space heaters.
Oh, yeah.
Hereas. And also my name is completely messed up.
Ally, that was me. I took those notes, so I think that's mine. Can y'all mess her name? All right. Is everybody good with the...
The only...the only other thing on the last paragraph on the first page, after we had the discussion about the...oh, my gosh, the presentation, we really voted. I think you asked everyone to...I think Lisa, you asked everyone to show their hands on if they wanted to move ahead. I don't know if that's important to have in there?
Yeah.
That we did vote not to go with that plan?
Not to go with the combined plan.
The combined plan.
I asked for a show of hands in who was not in favor of a combined building.
And it was...
And it was unanimous.
Yeah, so maybe we ought to put that it was...there was a vote and it was unanimous. So I would just add that a vote was taken.
We can take another vote.
We could, but we took it in the first meeting with everybody there. I mean, we can revoke that at any...
There was a vote taken, and I think it should be noted in the minutes that the vote was taken. Just in case someone comes back and says they had to arrive, which is, you know...
I have no problem. I mean, you didn't need a motion.
It was a fact.
You don't have to push it down.
You need to make a motion to add it.
Okay.
You want to put the changes in and then... You want to put the changes in and then wait on the minutes when we do the minutes so we can all approve the minutes?
Well, no, because it can only be the people that were at that meeting that can vote on those minutes.
Right. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with the added...
Amendment.
Yeah, with the amendment and the addition from...
That there was a vote. Do you want me to spell out what that addition is? Would that help? I don't know.
You're just adding...you just want to add that...
It just needs to reflect that Lisa Pacheco has or votes and shows hands of those who...
Were not in favor of a one-all building.
That was presented.
Second.
And the vote was unanimous.
So you made a motion. Bob seconded it. Everybody understand the motion and sound before? Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? And we abstain? Okay, very good. All right. Now, the next thing that we showed on tonight's agenda, and it was to appoint a committee chairman to do this. And since it just showed up on the agenda, then I think we should have some discussion and see if there's anybody interested in becoming the chairman of this committee. So I open it up to the floor. Don't jump all at once.
Well, I think Lisa has the most experience with these committees. I think she does.
Can I make a...maybe a suggestion for temporary chairman until we get on the road a little bit and then go from there? Somebody might take...want to take charge. Who, maybe not right now, but...
You may be able to determine what we're going to do.
Yeah, we turn them over first. I would make the...I'll make the motion that Jack be the chairman because he is not going to...he's not going to be having a strong voice in the city. He has the least...shall we say?
I'm not a resident.
But the select people, I mean, they would also not be represent...they represent the whole town. They wouldn't be representing a police or fire. I think the selectmen would be unbiased. I mean, personally, I feel...I mean, I don't know if Jack can be the chairperson. That has to be a...
I would think not. Well, Charlie made a motion. Anybody second his motion? I don't think there's no second.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
All right, Charlie.
I made...I would make a motion for a temporary chairman, not a permanent chairman, but a temporary chairman, and that the town administrator be the temporary chairman because he has nothing...he has no...
No bias, is that what you're saying?
Bias, yeah. I would say no bias, where someone else might...
Does Jack even remember the vote?
Does the town administrator agree to that?
Actually, it's just...Jack is a part-time town administrator, and he's putting in twenty hours...
I would think my time of vote, my being the town administrator is to pay.
Yeah, I was going to say.
As much as everyone else.
You want to negotiate this contract, Charlie?
What's that? Jackie, can you be on this thing without being a resident?
Yes.
That's the question. Okay, all right.
All right, since Charlie...excuse me. Since Charlie has made a motion... There's some questions. Is there a second on Charlie's motion? No second? Okay. So that motion's off the floor. There's no second. There's no motion. All right, so can we get back to the...
That's reasonable.
Yeah. The appointment of a chairperson. Everybody put up their hands if you want to be a chairperson, then we can pick one.
Danny's wrong.
Walk through out Lisa's name. Has anybody got any objections?
Somebody three miles away.
To have Lisa be the chairperson. I mean, don't hurt her feelings if you don't want her to be chairperson.
It should be...she would be representing the administration of the town, which I think would be very...that's...
She's representative of the program.
Well, the whole town.
Look, I'm more of a consensus builder than a hands-down, this is the way you've got to go. So it doesn't...you're not going to hurt my feelings if you vote not in favor of it. I don't...don't care.
It takes everybody's vote on things anyhow, so the chairman just kind of runs them.
Chairman has the headache.
We need leadership.
Has to do with post meetings and the agendas and...
Steer the ship.
Some of the things that they need.
And certainly, we've got Jack, who's, you know, had experience with this, working with all of us as a selectman. So, I mean, I feel comfortable with it, and she's had experience of this sort of thing, so.
Give him a motion. Lisa has had plenty of experience.
Right. So I move that...I'll make a motion. I move that Lisa Pacheco be nominated, appointed as chairperson.
Second.
Okay, motion made to appoint Lisa as the chairperson of the Building Committee. There was a second?
I second.
I said there was a second?
Oh, okay.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? No. And to let you know that we are recording the meeting. Free Cam is recording the meeting, and Ally is recording the meeting with this little tape device. And Ally's also typing the meeting. Okay, so with that, I'll turn the meeting over to the chairperson.
Thanks. First of all, are there any...anybody new that wasn't here last week? Can you just state your name so for the minutes, please?
I know who you are. What do you represent?
Right. Paul DeGlin, precinct one...sorry, precinct three, citizen member of the committee.
Charles Sullivan, precinct two, citizen.
Okay. Kent?
Well, I was here, but...
Just...
All right.
Not as a member.
Kent...all right, Kent Wilkins, I'm on the Finance Committee.
We should close the...we should close the Selectmen's meeting.
I didn't know it was still open. I wasn't here, sorry.
Yeah, and open up a new meeting. All right, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen's meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the Board of Selectmen's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Abstained? No. Can't be, there's only three. We all voted. So, okay, the Board of Selectmen's meeting for March...for May 11 is now closed, and I turn it over to open a new meeting. Ms. Pacheco.
All right. Do you want to make a motion to open the meeting, even though we're already open and we've already voted on something?
So continuing...
No, we voted on the chairperson from the Board of Selectmen's.
But we also voted to amend the minutes of the meeting during this Selectmen's meeting, so.
I'll make a motion that we openly board and amend the minutes as previously stated while we're in the Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the last time we were here, we went around the room and we talked about, you know, what we wanted in each of the buildings or the faults of each of the buildings and sort of what direction we felt we should go in. What I think we gathered each from that meeting was that no one was in favor of an all-in-one building, which we stated and reflected in the minutes that we just voted on, and that each area of town had very certain concerns. But I think that we really need to start to hone in on what we want to see in each of the buildings. So, for instance, I think that we should start with probably Town Hall. And we thought...we talked about what we wanted, but we didn't say, like, what do we specifically need? Yeah, we need more storage, but there are other things that you probably need, like a break room. So I think that we need to start to formulate those kinds of things, write them down on paper, and have those reflected in the minutes as we move forward, so it can be sort of like a drawing board for whoever we hire to come in to make sure that those areas are all checked off. Okay? So we can start with the Town Hall. And look, we're all in this together, so if we have ideas, Jack, you might not be thinking about a certain area, but somebody else might say, I think this is really important. Like, I think a community bathroom is more important than...you know what I mean? So let's talk about the Town Hall, and let's talk specifically about the needs that we feel are important in the Town Hall.
Parking space. You have to have plenty of parking space because starting with this year, you're going to have early voting right at the beginning of May, I mean November, right when taxes are due and everything, and that's going to continue. So there's plenty of times that residents come in to pay taxes. They have to wait until they can get a parking space to park in the street. Mary did make a comment about the...we've got employees parking down the road. I don't think that might be a good idea because of the traffic and everything that goes on there and everything. So if we do have it there, that is going to be one of the main things, is parking space too far for the residents to come and do business there. We need maybe a conference room to have meetings. There is some boards that have the meetings in the assonet section of town. We really don't have anything there for any boards to have meetings and stuff. So there should be a small conference room, you know, that they could have. Break room, like you said, it'd be nice to have a place for the employees to have their lunch, because right now, we have it at our desk. We have offices that we could take turns and everything with the personnel. They could take turns, because you're in the middle of eating, and people come to the window, and you've got to excuse me a minute, let me swallow, I cut my mouth.
Yeah, I also think it's having a break room or a common room is really good for camaraderie amongst employees. I think that right now, everybody is so sectioned off and in their own little world that there is no time to talk about anything else that might be going on or share a recipe or...
And based on what you're saying for the camaraderie and everything, this plan showed one on each floor. I don't think we need that, because then you start separating the people upstairs from the people downstairs. I think it's good to just have one area. And again, so we can all meet and stuff, you know, at different times you go in there. A place maybe where you can wash your dish or something instead of going to ladies' room to wash your dishes in the bathrooms, sink and...
So a break room with a sink, refrigerator, oven?
Yeah. Because right now, each office has their own...not microwave, but there's a few offices that have a microwave. They have small refrigerators in each one. I mean, that's running a lot of electricity and everything, too. So if you have one area where they could put their lunches in the refrigerator and stuff like that, you know. As far as the offices go, we said room. There's got to be a room for the mail, the mailroom and stuff. Right now, they're in the closet. An area like for the copier machines where the offices can use the copier machine and stuff, so it's not in the hallway or in one office, that they got to interrupt that office all the time and stuff to come into.
So maybe a mailroom with space enough for a copier machine, maybe a fax, like a central fax machine?
The copier, you would need to have one on each floor, because you can't have people coming up and down.
And probably, it would be good for the mailroom to be in there, because remember, the mailbox used to be out in the hallway, and it was moved because of confidentiality. People could take someone's mail out, but we didn't put a bag.
People were reading it.
So if being in the closet, I mean, so if you had that with the copy machine, then residents just wouldn't walk in and make a copy either, because, I mean, right now, even committees, like, we have to go and bother you. I mean, do you share a copier?
Yeah, yeah. So if there was some place where the copier was for access...
A work...kind of a workroom, and then the central is workroom.
As far as the copiers go, though, there's some offices like mine need to have a copier in it, because every...we're taking...constantly taking copies of birth, death, and marriage licenses and stuff like that. So there might be some offices that might need a small machine in it other than the ones that would be in the main room. Trying to think what else.
Hold on. Ally, do you use a copy machine in your office or...?
Yeah, she uses one, too, all the time.
And what about building?
They have the one in the hallway.
They have the one in the hallway, but they have one in their office. Any other offices with one inside?
The treasurer has one, the tax collector.
But they don't have the big machines.
They have the small ones.
They just have smaller ones, okay, yeah.
Because sometimes, if they're going to run off something, they've got to come in our office anyhow and use it. Yeah.
There's one in my office.
Yeah, yeah. You need them. I'm trying to think what else. Well, of course, we're going to need an elevator space for an elevator. Like you said, I don't know how big the bathroom, so they have to be, of course, handicap accessible.
They have to have a handicap bathroom.
Well, yeah, it's not...they want one on each floor.
Yeah, that's going to be handicap.
The other thing you're going to have to do is if you...no matter what type of building you have, the minute you're going to go and do a new building, you're going to have to be in conform with the safety for the records in the Town Hall. And there's a Massachusetts law that the Selectmen are responsible for that. So for records and everything, you're going to have to go to walk in safe for records and everything.
Records retention.
Yeah, yeah. Besides the records, you know, space for...
So we'd have to get a copy of that to know what the requirements are.
Yeah, there is. There's all...the state has requirements, and like I said, that is the responsibility of the Selectmen.
All right. What about as far as...like, right now, you guys have the draw windows. What other way would you see your offices working? Ally, you can jump in.
Well, some do have...you just walk in, and there is counters and stuff. You walk in the doors and there's counters and all. I mean, I don't know what the other offices feel. I mean, I've been in other Town Halls and stuff, and a lot of them about where now they don't have the windows.
We have to go and look at other towns that we...
They have it.
I didn't know if you guys had a preference.
It...I mean, it requires more space to have the counter. You have people be able to...you have the space for people to be in there plus the counter to keep the confidentiality between that and your desk, so that requires more space.
If you've got a large enough room, you're not right here.
Hold on, one at a time. Go ahead.
Wouldn't it be easier to have a meeting with the people in the Town Hall and get all of this information on one sheet?
Well, she...right now, she's representing, so what will...she'll do is she'll go back with what she's done, and then she'll add to it, and we can talk on...
Everybody...when they had the feasibility study done, everybody gave their list, their wish lists, we called it. We gave the wish lists of the things that were needed, and it's like I needed a room from all my...all my equipment for elections and stuff like that. Yeah, I didn't see that in there. But I'm saying, we all did give a list of the things we would need.
Now, we're just straight up home here.
I'm sure there's going to be additions to the list, and there's going to be other things you're going to think of that you made in between.
Yeah, this is a, I'm sure, a final set in stone.
No, this is not...no. Maybe if you took that list, matter to it, it's in the feasibility study with representatives from the government?
Well, each...yeah, each office, yeah, had given it. So the Selectmen, you must have the list, or...
Yeah, we do. But now is a time for the Building Committee to hone in on some of this stuff, make it reflective in the minutes, and as we move forward, to go look at some of the places that we'd be looking at, is make sure that we'll be looking at this as a checklist. And also, when we go to hire a company to come in and do a presentation to us, it's all in front of us. So we have it all on one sheet and one paper. And we're all on the same level, because remember, we're going to be voting for the whole kit and caboodle, whether we just do a Town Hall or whether we just do a police station or whatever. This is the committee that's going to vote on it to move it forward for a Town Meeting vote. So we all have to be on the same page. You know, it's great to say that it's in this book, but if we don't all read the book, then it's no good for any of us, so.
I have one question about the point of entry slash counter space. Some might have to be different than others. The treasurer collective might have to be a secured one, because that's going to be a...if that's...we do go single point of pay, you know, that one might want to be a secured one versus maybe the building manager doesn't even want one. I don't know, but, you know, so there is...there's going to be some room there.
I think one of the things we do need to set up, whether this is Town Hall, even our Town Hall, we should...a lot of times, like, right now, our phone system, you dial...it's 911 is for emergency, right? Our phones, in order to call a phone number out, you have to dial nine. So if you go 91 and you hit that one again, the police station is constantly getting a thing of 911 from the Town Hall. It doesn't say what number called. We don't even realize we're doing it sometimes. But they call and they say, look, is everybody okay? And they'll come by, and they've got to check every single office to see if everybody is okay. They should, first of all, change it like the school. I think they got a six instead of the nine, you know, to make an outside call. But also, sometimes our alarm, we set...it goes off, and we end up calling, we say, oh, everything's okay. Well, somebody could have a gun to my head and say, say everything's okay! And they say, okay, everything's fine. We don't have anything set up, and there should probably be some set up. Some places have panic buttons or something like that, the Town Halls. We've never really had main issues here in Free Town, but I'm saying, if you're going to do a new building and everything, it might be something that you might want to put in.
Yep.
I've taken classes like the safety of your office and everything. Even in the hallways, they have those things that you can see down the hallway and stuff, some type of security within the Town Hall, because a lot of things are happening nowadays in Town Halls that they were a safe place to be and like a lot of other places. It's not safe anymore. You've got a lot of...we've had irate people coming, and we've had to call the police. I've had somebody even during an election thing, it was a candidate for a state election. It was a brother that came in, was getting very loud, and a police officer just happened to be there. He stepped in and put the person in his place. So I'm saying, you know, it's...
It's a security.
It's a security measure. We probably do need some security within the office.
Anybody else have anything to add?
Maybe water.
That's a sore subject. You'll have a kitchen. You can have a refrigerator.
You mean hot water?
No metal pieces coming out of the water, right?
Clear water, not groundwater.
And I think really important is storage, too.
Yeah, that's the main thing, yeah. Because the retention of schedule of records, like for my office, there's a lot of stuff that's permanent. I don't know what they think we're going to keep everything, but we're running out of space.
Is there a requirement to digitalize a lot of stuff now, or is...
A lot of it, even if you've got it digitalized, are in the computer or anything, you've got to have the paper copy.
Still have your hot copies.
Charlie, what about...and Paul, what about, like, from a customer service point of view? Is there anything that you would like to see in Town Hall? I mean, we're in there, we just, like, don't even think about it anymore, because we're in there so often, but as a customer service sort of case?
In, I have to say, in the construction process, there should be someplace where there is a meeting room. Refer to your town hall, okay? At the downstairs is a meeting, a large meeting room where people can go and where there's, you know, it looks like it's a meeting room where you can talk to people, like, turn around and things.
So not just the hallways, which is in?
Right.
I do like the idea of interior desks in the offices instead of windows, because you end up piling up people in the hall who have different needs, and, you know, it just gets awfully crowded. Interior space with a couple of chairs for people to wait, so you keep the hall free.
And just as...this meeting room does not necessarily have to be in the Town Hall. So in a lot of places...
You need one, for example, in the police station.
Right. That wouldn't be a bad idea. Not...I'm not advocating one thing or another, but not a bad idea to have a meeting room in the police station, so that people actually get to see where the police station is, and they're not...
In trouble.
In trouble. To actually see what the building is like, so.
All right, so that's a good list to start. Police, since we never know when you're going to leave, want to start from there?
So we're talking about the wish list type thing?
Sort of, or things that you really feel are essential, not just wish.
Okay. I would say that essentially, the most essential parts of the police department, the needs that present themselves today are just level one space.
But that's a...
Last week, I think you gave us a lot of examples of, you know, having conflicts of people and no place to even meet with them and take them.
Right.
So is it like meeting rooms?
So when you say space, like, what...be more specific, like, trying to hone in on it exactly?
Okay, hone it down. So I would say, like, if you look at our station now, it's kind of like that open...that California classroom concept that some of us went through with the little school. So that's exactly what we definitely need to stay away from with a new station or any kind of revamp of this station. We need to be able to service people with different issues, whether they be on the severe end of criminal enforcement or investigation, where as opposed to someone who's just coming in to, you know, just get information from dispatch or a log or a report or something like that. I think that has to do with the overall layout and separation. And what I mean by that is like people that we end up dealing with on the more severe end of things, like arrests or PC or anything like that, those people... Those people, those areas should be completely separate from the areas where we would more than likely be dealing with, you know, common citizens, people that are coming in just for services like LTCs or fingerprint services or just for advice. Whereas now, what we're seeing, what we have is basically you, you could have contact with someone who's under arrest. And that's not necessarily good, because that person that's under arrest still has rights to privacy, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing, if you look...
So more like, you need an interview room?
Well, you need, you need more than one interview room, Lisa. And what I, what I mean by that is you need a variety of interview rooms.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the first interview room that, if we're looking at the severity side of things, is you would have an interview room in your, in your cell block. And the reason for that is, is if you have someone under arrest, you don't necessarily wanna be marching them through the station to get them to your interview room. You wanna be able to simply remove them from, from their containment to a room that's relatively close and you're able to interview there and then move them back, thus reducing the possibility of any kind of problems that may arise. Thus reducing any ability for someone to maybe possibly come into contact with that person that really shouldn't be in contact with that person. And you never know, like, I know one of the examples, like Mary said, was I, you know, on that Easter Sunday last year, we had victims and arrestees in the station at the same time and inadvertently they were coming into contact with each other, but we just had no place to put them. So, that would be your first interview type of room. Your second interview type of room would be like something you might see at Plymouth PD. It's more of a, a generalized interview room, which is right off the foyer. Like, if you're just there to talk about something that's not very heavy or involved or something that you're not embarrassed to talk about, but you just wanna speak to a police officer or sergeant, a shift supervisor. You can, you have just basically a common room with a desk and a few chairs in it, and that's right off the foyer. You don't have to pull the people into the confines of the station. It's, you know, it's understood, like, if you're in that room, it's just like you're there to just seek counsel or something like that, you're really not there. Because, you know, people's imaginations tend to get away from them, like, they saw a speed magnet coming out of the confines of the station, what did he do? You know? And then, like, the third type of interview room would be one that is maybe detached or attached to, like, your detectives' offices, your continuing investigation offices. So if you do have to bring someone into the station, but not necessarily down to the cell block to interview them, you could bring them into the station and, and conduct an interview or have a private place to speak if it's a sensitive issue. Witness statement type thing? Witness type statement, someone who wants to report a crime against them that they necessarily don't want anyone to know about. That would be where you would bring them, to that type of interview room. So you're really kinda looking at like three different types of interview rooms.
Okay.
So.
Break room?
Break room. So you, you break down, from what I've seen in different stations, break rooms are kinda like, you have an officer's day room and then you have like a break room. And what I mean by that is, like, a day room is kinda, it's, it's more generalized. Whereas a break room is more set up for, you know, like you said with Jackie, like, microwaving food or keeping a dish hot or something like that. And you have a sink there, that would be your break room. A table that's probably big enough to accommodate, you know, possibly, you know, six to eight individuals. So that change of shift, or if you have like, like the Fourth of July, like we talk about, we're, we're in our, I call it our multi-purpose room. Fourth of July, we got fifteen guys all trying to cram in there and get supper on board and catch their assignments and their briefing as to what to look for, where to go, where they're supposed to be. And it's, it ends up being, you know, ten guys in the room and then another five outside of the, in the hallway just kinda peering in the door, trying to hear what the lieutenant or the sergeant who's running the fireworks detail is saying. You know, Lieutenant Sullivan can comment on that.
Yeah, you guys have been around the block.
He's been around the block, he's seen that in action, so he's trying to do that.
You guys wanna...
Everything Sweden is saying is accurate.
Do you want a duty room separate from a break room, right?
A duty room or a, like, I was, let me think back on that, kind of like a conference room, sort of?
Kinda tying into what Jackie and Lieutenant, excuse me, I keep calling him lieutenant. Charlie said that if you look at Swansea PD, they have, right in the front of the station, the station's kind of like a, like a T configuration, but when you walk into the general entrance, right off of the main foyer, you would see your dispatch and then you would, you would hook a shop right. And now you open up into a room, not as big, not as long as this, but decent size that I would say it holds for, for the table. Thirty-two to forty individuals. You know, it has those, you know, the thin tables, not as, not as wide as this, with the desks, the chairs rather. And it's all set up, you know, for, it's all mic'd up, it's all cam, it's all camered up. And they use it as a generalized meeting room. I do believe they hold their selectmen's meetings in there, some of their board meetings are in there. And then Swansea PD piggybacks off of the availability, the available time to run in-service training out of it. Which isn't necessarily a bad thing, because now you, you attract more police officers to your town. And as crazy as that sounds, it's like more eyes on your town, like, they, you know, cops don't, I don't know how many times guys are coming into in-service or something like that and they, they saw something, they called it in or something like that. It doesn't happen all the time, but it has the potential to happen. So, and if you're going to have a hotbed type of meeting, we've all seen those, you know, controversial issues in town.
Oh, we didn't have that.
Right? It kinda seems to, I would say, leave, leave to the imagination that, hey, you are going to the police station. You need to tone down your rhetoric, you need to tone down, you know, your maybe assaultive language and stuff like that, because you are, you know, not that it stops people from doing that, but it, it puts it in their mind that, you know, you are close to law enforcement and if you decide to get out of here or something like that, it'll be dealt with quickly and swiftly.
What about a locker area?
Locker, locker rooms, to me, it seems that, obviously, equal and separate, male and female. And I would say that they need to be adequate to accommodate six to eight individuals at any given time. And the only reason why I say that is that, you know, at shift change, you know, you may not have eight individual, you may not have six individuals, six officers in that one locker room. But in the, in the, in the span of twenty minutes, you will have six offices changing, you know, you know, rigging up, you know, putting their duty belts on, stuff like that. And as a matter of being equal, I think you need to have the same for, you know, female locker room. Even though, you know, right now, we only have one female officer, but you never know what'll happen down the road, that could sway completely to the opposite end. And then, you know, we have, you know, inadequate locker room for females.
Showers and...
I would say that, you know, at least one shower in each locker room. I would kinda lean more towards two. Just for the very reason that if you have an adequate locker room, and I also feel there's added, added benefit to actually having a gym area inside the police station.
Now you're talking my language.
Well, I just think it, it makes sense, because a lot of officers have talked about the fact that if they could come in an hour before their shift, they would work out, they would shower and they'd be on the road. And then after their shift, they would work out, you know, and go home, because it's kinda one shop, one-stop shopping. And now I feel you have a cap, kind of a captive audience. You know, you go to a gym, you tend to work out with a partner. So now if you've got two guys out of three or a guy and, a guy and, you know, or two patrol, let's just say, you know, they decide that they're gonna work out after work or work out before work, you have them. And if you need to put them to use, like, you need them, like, if a lieutenant comes down and says, hey, we have something big going on, we need you guys, we need you now. Obviously, they're gonna drop what they're doing and they're gonna, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna suit up and, and do their thing.
What about offices, as, as far as, like, I know the chief's office, but sergeants?
Well, the chief's office, obviously, the chief has his own office. The sergeants, there's five sergeants to one office, two desks. And I wouldn't say there's necessarily a problem with that, but if you look at what we're, what we're crammed into, it's not just desks in an office, it's, it's desks, it's several file cabinets, it's, you know.
More space then?
Yeah, more space, you know, so I imagine if you had, you know, an area which accommodated maybe three desks, you know, one for the, you know, the senior sergeant, you know, the senior sergeant, and then two desks for the, the, you know, the two or, the, excuse me, the three to four junior sergeants, it, it could still work, most certainly.
Do you guys have anything to add, go ahead?
The day room you mentioned, what is that?
What is a day room? Well, it's, it's more, and it's not, it's not a necessity, Paul, I don't think. But I think you find, you see, like, the day room is just more of a generalized room. It's an area where if you don't necessarily wanna bring people into an interview room, you have a place to bring them and if you need to have a casual conversation, a presentation, like when...
That's like the three, you're talking about, is that one of, what you recall one of the three interview rooms that you had talked about before?
No, no, that would be separate.
Separate?
Yeah.
I can come in.
So is this like for a resident, if they had some questions and needed to speak to an officer?
Yeah, well, you can do that, you can...
Day room, rather than at a counter?
Well, you could do that in that front foyer, that front foyer room. But if you, if you had something that was more sensitive, Mary, you could go into an interview room or you could go into the day room. Like, if, you know, if you had some real reservations about being in an interview room, because, you know, we have signs that by law, you have to disclose that you're being audio and video recorded. Some people might wanna not be in there, so you could go into the day room and, and speak there. Whereas the break room is more of a private room, if you will. You know what I'm saying, like, you know, because like, you know, you've got a guy who's chowing down his oatmeal in the morning, you don't necessarily want.
The day room is different than the, than the big conference room in the foyer.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, that, I, I would say that if you were thinking about that conference room, the big conference room up front, like you see in Swansea, like, that would be like your, kinda your, your multi-purpose room, which would be shared across, you know, both with police function and, you know, town hall function.
Would you need sleep quarters?
No, we don't need sleep quarters, no.
Sleep in the hall?
Evidence room?
One of the things that...
Evidence room?
You could have a, you could have an evidence, I'm sorry, Charlie.
Go ahead. One of the things that I think that probably with the supervisor, you probably would've liked it, you would want a space where the supervisor would be, that's on that shift, could, could work from, which may be different than where he may have a desk of his own for, you know, permanent purposes. Say he has a added responsibility, he would have a desk, he could have a desk where he would work for that added responsibility. But there'd be another space, probably close to the dispatch, where they would be able to watch over what's going on if they needed to.
Like an OIC room?
Right.
So whoever's OIC for that shift, that's their room?
Yeah, either OIC or you could use whatever.
Whichever.
Right, you know, and the end of the shift, he picks up and he, he leaves and the next person comes in. That probably would be a good thing to have.
What do you do, roll call now, shift, where do you do, change of shift? Yeah, all of that takes place in that officer's room, that, that room, that room which, which we, we do roll call, report writing, supper and lunch breaks, evidence processing. But in your new...
That's how it is.
In your newly, where, would, would you do roll call within a specific area or where would you do roll call slash? I would say your roll call would, would take place in your day room.
Your day room.
Day room, yeah.
What about the gun storage, ammo storage, all that stuff?
Well, right now, that's in outbuildings.
Yeah, but I mean, we need that in the, in the police station, right?
Well, yeah, so you would, you would, you'd have an adequate square footage for an armory. And contained within that armory, you'd have lockers for long, long firearms, handguns, et cetera, et cetera, surplus firearms that are used on duty. And you would have adequate, the ability to move, move that ammo into, into that, that room relatively easy, I would say. Because when they deliver ammo for us, it's, it comes on a pallet, it comes on a big truck. And basically, what we have to do is like case by case, move the ammo into where we need to put it. If we had the ability to maybe just keep it palletized and moved into a spot, that would be great. But if we, I would say the most important thing is, is that the armory would be adequate to both hold, hold and store firearms that we use on our frontline cruises and issue to our officers and also hold the, you know, the amount of ammo stockpile that the chief sees fit to keep, keep on hand. Also inside the armory is where Sergeant Ashley and Officer Fornishari and Sergeant Dewire service our weapons, site in our weapons. And when I say weapons, I don't just mean what we carry on our waist, we have, you know, we obviously have our issue handgun, we have our long rifle and we have shotgun. Also in that armory is the service and storage of our tasers. So, you know, you just kinda add on a bunch of stuff to what, if you, you know, if you're just thinking straight like guns, you know, handguns, it's really not that, it's more. Because it's, it's actually three type of weapons that they choose to have issued to us, plus the ammo that goes with that, plus the backups to those weapons, just in case something happens or they have to cycle out a weapon, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, presently in the, in the police department, our armory, we keep computers in there, you know, mostly the mobile side of the, of the department. And there's some other surplus stuff that is of value that basically you would probably put in a different type of closet, but because we have limited storage, that's where it goes. And the reason for that is, is only certain sites have a key to that, you know, the chief, the lieutenant. And that way, you know, they know that, all that stuff, when they leave it, that's the way it's gonna be. It's not gonna be messed with, it's not gonna be muddled with, it's, that's the way it is. So, and if I could talk about one other thing, you know, you talked about the, the break room and the day room. So when you break down out of that general purpose room, you need a report writing room. And what I mean by that is, the report writing room needs to be kind of a sterile atmosphere. Like, no TV, you know, no, no distraction. And from what I'm seeing, you, you take your report writing rooms and you, you put it in, in or close to your cell block. And what I mean by that is, if you're thinking about maybe a cube or a square, all of your cells need to be sight and sound isolated from opposite sex and from juveniles. That means that when you build, when you build or construct a, a cell block, you can't have males be in sight and sound of females. You cannot have juveniles in sight and sound of either males or female adults. So, by the use of, you know, sort of like an L, or excuse me, like a, like a box, you can, you can accomplish that. But in the middle of that box, you would have your report writing room, where your officers are able to type reports in a sterile atmosphere, not be disturbed or distracted by outside influence such as television or whatever's going on in the station, et cetera, et cetera. They can focus on the reports, but at the same time, if they do have someone in custody, they're able to have eyes on, vision of the person that's locked up. So not only do you have your surveillance system watching, you know, watching... So not only do you have your surveillance system watching, you know, watching, you know, the prisoner, you now have the officer in close proximity to render aid or help that person if he needs to be helped. Right there while he's completing his report. So there, there needs to be a report writing room. And more than likely, you'd find that report writing room pretty much down in the confines of the station, wherever you decide to put your cell block, your Sally port, in your booking room. Evidence room, if you look at our evidence room now, I'll say simply bigger is better. Environmental control, and it needs to be controlled environmentally. There's not much to say about that. Doesn't have to be anything special, just needs to be secure. And it, it needs to be decent sized.
Record storage.
Record storage, again, environmentally controlled. Right now, we're using the, I call them the largest file cabinets on earth, the convex boxes. They weren't great, but again, I don't know what the cutoff time is for destruction of the physical records. Chief Abbott would know specifically. But I do know when I go in there, I see records from like way, way back. There is no, you gotta keep them all, right Lieutenant?
The other thing is, is not just record, it becomes an evidence file. So you could have one that has one sheet of paper in it and the next one has two.
It's a lot. The other thing is, I think as we move forward, talk more about police station, we have to ensure that it's, it's a facility that has a basement, that's a full basement.
I, I feel that, I feel that, and that's a good point, Paul. With the basement, you know, you, you pretty, essentially double your, double your space with, with the basement. And again, it isolates that, that part of what we deal with away from, you know, arrest, et cetera, et cetera. It, it just, it keeps, it keeps it away from, like, you know, for instance, like, I'll just lay this out for you, like, say we're having a selectmen's meeting, say we build a station, it's on one level. We're having a selectmen's meeting in this, we decide to, you know, do that, you know, that multipurpose room in front of the station. Listen, people come into that station, they're not always nice, they're not always quiet, right? If they're, if they're downstairs displaced away from, away from that, that, that general purpose area. In a, in, in a way that we're able to, you know, bring someone in in a cruiser, you go in a Sally port, you shut the door behind you, you bring them into your booking block, you're able to do them. It's much better than being on one level and you have to drive through a parking lot or come around the back and now, and then all of a sudden, you've got a real unruly person. And, you know, we got, we got a problem, you know?
So how would you do it? Just, you have to shoot and you throw them down into the cell like that? Because I don't know, you look at it, you're gonna have to get this person into the station somehow.
Drive in. It's a drive in, if you drive in, you actually drive into the building.
And again, you know, just, I'm just trying to follow this, but the last thing in the world, in my mind, that you want is a basement if you don't have to have one. One thing in town that we have actually is space, we actually do have space. We're not, we're not in the, in the center of town, we've only got like three feet in this side of the, that's what we've gotta do. We've got an opportunity to do, to spread out a loop. And again, down south, they have like three star stations. This star is administrative, this star here is where your cell blocks are, and the other star, none of them touch. And if, and a question of bringing prisoners or anything like that, you've got a separate building just for that. No one else approaches that door, it's cordoned off, you bring them in.
That wasn't my point, Bob. My point was that when you have a full basement, we actually build in additional storage for expansion, especially when we have to store, we're storing records outside right now.
No, no, I understand.
That's the only purpose of having a full basement. It wasn't to bring the prisoners and put them in a basement, that wasn't my.
The, the other thing too is.
The other thing, oh, what's the, why forget?
Charlie has that one too.
One thing we left out is we have to have space to communications.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that part yet. Charlie?
Well, the only thing that is very important that I, I think people understand is that the building that they already have now, one of the biggest, two of the biggest problems with that building from, from the beginning, which were in the, initially in the design of the building, but were cut out because of costs, was a basement, which you add. If you, if you had a basement in the, in the police station next door, you would have fifty percent, well, a hundred percent more space, okay? And the other thing is a Sally port. It's the, how, I mean, a lot of our buildings, we're just flirting with lawsuits, okay? And one of them would be very easily, a juvenile's brought in under arrest at eight o'clock at night, he's being brought out of that, or she's being brought out of that car into the police station. Somebody goes by on Bull Road and sees it. The, the cost of building a, a basement and building a Sally port were, the basement was $4,000, Bob, okay? Back in 1979, when they did, $4,000 they cut out. Where would we be with that fourth, I think that would have been a very good investment. $4,000 on a basement, it would have been a very good investment. The investment, I, I can't remember what the cost of the Sally port was, I'm, I'm saying it's probably no more than 12 at the time. That's what we're looking at.
You need an elevator if you have a basement, right?
Uh, well, not necessarily. Would be, depend on what you were using the basement for.
We did talk last week about the fact that if you do have a car and you needed to have it there for evidence.
Right.
You could put it somewhere.
Secure and have it processed and then released, yeah.
So, I mean, that would serve it too, I mean, if somebody.
If you brought somebody in in the basement and they have to get up to the next level, it has to be.
Well, it would depend on how you designed it.
Right.
The, the other thing is, is with, with the basement, you know, you move, you kinda move your line functions downstairs. And what I mean by that is, you would have your, you would have your locker rooms, your gym, your break room, all that stuff would be downstairs too. And now, your first level would be your lieutenant, you know, your OIC office, your lieutenant's office, your detective's division, your chief's office, your comm center, your secretary's office, if you choose to have one, your records clerk, if you choose to have one. The generalized meeting room. And whatever offices you decide to have on that work on, on a daily function. You wouldn't wanna clutter, and again, it, and it, it all depends on how, how big of a building you wanna go. If you wanna spread this all out, then you can't.
Depends on the design of the building.
You can.
Again, it, it, it makes, to my, in my mind, it makes perfect sense because you're talking about record storage and a lot of stuff. You know, record storage is a buffer, you can use that as a buffer for anything, you can use it to buffer prisoners, you can use it to buffer in-between stuff. There's all kinds of designs that you can think of here. But actually, what I think would be really helpful is that, you know, we've talked about so far thirteen rooms, fourteen rooms. If we could get some sort of an idea about square footage, I mean, what you would be looking for as far as the square footage of the rooms. And it's the same thing with every, this basically is just, if you have a building, you can split it up any way you want. You can make as many rooms as you want, you can do whatever you want. It's nice to know what a preference as far as square footage is, so you have some sort of an idea, what kind of building you wanna go for. You can start looking at your options, but the whole idea is not to limit your options when it comes to the space and it comes to the buildings. Because it could work out actually that, that it might be the best design to keep two things together. But I, you're exactly right, I, I don't wanna see the police next to the library, that's ridiculous. But again, you know, could the police be next to something else, you know? For example, the water, water department. I don't, I don't see a problem there, but that doesn't necessarily have to happen either. I mean, but if we're talking freestanding, there's all kinds of designs.
Right, well, I think what we said we were gonna do the net, the, within the next couple of meetings is, once we go through each one of the different areas, that we would go and visit a couple of police stations, a couple of town halls, a couple of libraries. So then, we can go back, look at this and say, this is gonna work, this doesn't work. And then we have, you know, again, sort of narrowed our, our, our thought process.
Well, I think the square footage is gonna be the key here to any building, obviously, whether it's, whether it's basement and up or.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
It doesn't matter, but we need to know, we really need to know what, what we're looking at as far as square footage. What the ideal situation for you guys would be, the number of square feet, number of rooms. We don't care what with the rooms, but it's the number of square feet. So if you're looking at a building, you must start adding things up as far as square footage. No matter what happens in building, the square footage is the key to anything. It's the same thing with the town hall needs, or the same thing with any other building that we need, we need to know what the square footage is for.
Just like in the, in the school, the square footage of some classrooms, but it's gotten, were larger than some of the other classrooms. Charlie?
What was the, I, the building needs report, what did it say for a police station?
It was just like 10,000 square feet.
For the whole thing, well, they, yeah, they were gonna.
To the police department. I think it was, I think it was 10,000.
No, I don't think so, I think it was 15,000.
Was it 15,000?
This is what they're recommending, you know, existing, so I mean, this is.
The needs assessment was like 12, nine, I think, and the recommendation was nine, nine.
Yeah, but that's.
Again, guys, this is gonna be, I, I understand, like, everybody wants the, excuse me. I guess everybody wants the end result out of you tomorrow, like, okay, we wanna make that decision tomorrow. But we really have to do this meticulously to ensure that we get exactly what we want. So when we go to the townspeople and we have our meeting, that we can stand up and say, no, we really feel like the basement is necessary because somebody will get up and say, why is the basement necessary? And we'll be able to answer all of us that question. And we'll, we will know what the square footage of some of the rooms, some of the, some of the rooms you might want are probably gonna be a smaller square footage than some of the other rooms. So we can't just say, okay, we want a 900 square foot room. We don't know that. We, some rooms are gonna be bigger, some rooms are gonna be smaller. And as we go around and look at Swansea or Dartmouth or whatever else, and some of those police stations, we're gonna grab from some of those things and say, wait a second, this is probably gonna work better for us than that department. And then we can come back and revise this list before we go forward. Because right now, if we go and hire a company or, or we ask for companies to come in to do something for us, we're all over the map. We have not like honed in on exactly what we want. What you want and what I want and what he, you know, you're saying no basement and they're saying a basement, and we, we really need to understand each other and why we need, and we feel that these things are important.
I mean, we have some of it in writing, but I think it's really important to hear from each area so that we all hear it about what the needs are.
Right.
Because we might just stop at, you know, I don't know a police station, and, you know, so this is helpful.
I didn't get why, why a drive-in basement would be kind of, I, I didn't know until we started talking about it.
Right, exactly.
It does make sense.
Doesn't mean everybody's gonna get everything, but I mean, it's really subtle.
We also need to know how many buildings we're talking about, too.
And that's another thing, once we start going through all these separate buildings and we say, okay, well, like, I think last week, we kinda talked about, hey, you know what? Maybe the library and the senior center close by and attached, isn't such a bad idea? Because then some, you know, they can kinda work with one another. Like those were, and I'm not saying that that's what we ended up with, but we're like, oh, that might work, or maybe it won't work, I don't know. This committee hasn't made a, made a decision. And the other part of that is that money is gonna drive this decision as well.
You know what, are we gonna attack, are we gonna strive to put up one, two, three buildings, four buildings all at the same time? Are we gonna attack the building that we need has the most needs first? Because, I don't know, I find that, I mean, if we try to say to the taxpayer, listen, we're gonna put up three different buildings, you know, I think that's a hot sell.
I think it, I agree with you, Paul.
Whereas we do it on a step-by-step basis, it won't be a hot sell.
And I think we have to say what the big picture is.
I actually think that you should present it as a, as a, like, on a sliding scale and say, listen, our most immediate need is a police station is falling down, we need to do something about this immediately. And then, we have other projects that we're going to be coming back to you in the future, we'd like your input, but we'd like, we're gonna be coming back in the future for two other buildings or three other buildings, or however many buildings we decide.
Well, and it was a very small showing when they, they presented this report, you know, and it was a little, it was a big crowd, to find out what they found the needs were of the, of the town. And, and it said black and white, and so we're, we're really building on that too. And then we go from there. And, and really, I think too, this is where, you know, we have a town manager that's going to help us because he's been through all of this. And hopefully, you know, that will be, your experience will be, you know, helping tourism. But we've gotta keep, it's like, now it's a gathering info time. So get it right.
I think you have to present it to the town, the town meeting, that there's a plan.
Exactly.
Even if we say, we're all gonna do this now, we have to present it to them.
Like a master plan.
We've done this, that's what we, this is what we need.
Absolutely. We can't just, go ahead.
Just to add to that, should we be looking at the possibilities of alternatives for some facility for a period of time?
Oh, we will have to, we'll have to definitely.
We're gonna take that as our mission also.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, I think that we have talked about there's space at the elementary school, should, should we.
Last week we mentioned that.
Close town hall, you know, there is space over there, I know Stop and Chop said that we could use some of the offices in, in their building as well. So, yeah, those are, those are all things that we.
And then we said we're gonna talk about what, what do we do with the buildings that we might not use anymore.
But again, this is so tedious and I know that we're all jumping forward because we want to go forward so bad because this is like, this is the first time, I think, that everybody's been at the table and been talking about this. And, and we all want the end result, but I think that we have to be really cautious in making sure that we look at all of the buildings. And then, when, once we have a company come in or, and, you know, they start to look at what this is and what it's gonna cost us, that's when we make our decision and say, you know what? We can only afford A and B, we can't afford C, but maybe down the road, we can afford C. And then, and then what grants are also available? And how can we use those grants? Exactly. But we have to do this, I know, and, and maybe what we do is we say, okay, you know what, we'll take two buildings a night until we're done, instead of like trying to do everything and be exhausted by the end.
And I think what's helpful is if we bring our. Our team with the board, and, and you can kinda follow along with the square footage in the police one and so forth, and, and as someone gives you information, you could jot it in.
Lucille, hold up, hold up, I'm sorry to cut you off, Mr. Sadik, but Lucille had her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to let everybody know what the, the libraries have been doing. We've got a library planning committee that's been working for some time now towards identifying what the libraries need in a new building. And one of the things that we did do was to visit about six new libraries and know the things that they had that would be good for us to have. So we, we've already done that, we've taken a lot of photographs of different features that we saw. And in the, in the library world, you create a document called a building program. And so the planning committee is in the process of completing and refining that document, which is about 63 pages long, could end up shorter as we trim it down. But the, the fact is that we've been working along to the goal of potentially applying for a construction grant. And this coming year is a construction grant round, but we would have to have certain things done before we can apply for a construction grant, and they're not held every year. So one of the things that I'm trying to determine is, are we going to, we, when I say we, I mean the libraries, are we going to be held back, I guess, from proceeding, applying for a grant because we're going to be part of this process or?
No, I, I, I don't think that that has, one has something to do with the other. Because I don't think there are blanket programs like that, there are specific programs. If you're, you're writing a grant for the libraries in the town of Great Town, that's what that grant is. We can't write a grant and say, hey, we wanna build some buildings, can you give us some money? It's, you know, a blanket for everybody's building, but as a library, you could write it as a separate grant.
In, in order to, to be able to do that, we have. In, in order to, um, to be able to do that, we have to have certain things in place. So, one of the things that we had requested was, and this is a requirement of the state now, that you hire what they call an owner's project manager. And, um, we do have money for that in the money that was given to us a number of years ago for, by the state and by the town as well, for the planning process of the libraries. But, that doesn't seem to have gone anywhere. So, is that going to go forward, Jack? We had submitted that request to you and then we haven't heard anything, so...
Well, it's up to the, it's up to this group in the selectmen as to how we're gonna proceed on all of these fronts.
Yeah, but this group doesn't know about that.
Well, we haven't, we haven't discussed anything about that yet.
No, we haven't.
So we have, we really, you know, again, that's part of the process of discussing what the needs of a library are, where they should be situated, what would be the best for the, for everyone in the town for a location.
And where you have it, and...
Right.
Go ahead, Paul.
We haven't, we haven't been there yet.
How much money do you have available right now for the...
Approximately thirty-four thousand dollars.
Would that, is that sufficient?
Well, it would have to hopefully be sufficient.
With, for the owner's project manager, that's what that money is for?
It would, it's supposed to cover both the owners, at, at the time that we got the grant, there was no such thing as the owner, owner's project manager at that stage of the game. This is a new requirement that the state has put in. When we initially got the money, it was mainly supposed to be used for an architect. I really don't know how much these people charge. When we go out to hire somebody, we would have to stipulate that, number one, it would, hiring them would be subject to availability of funds, and, uh, salary would be negotiable.
Well, the thirty-four thousand, what, what do you, what is the library planning to use that money for right now? To move, based on what I heard, to move this thing forward for you, what are you gonna do with the thirty-four thousand? You're gonna...
We're hoping to be able to hire an owner's project manager and the architect to do the floor plans.
And that, and you need that before you go to the state, before you write the grant?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
When you write the grant, what's the matching for the grant?
Oh, um, well, the, the, as I understand it, the state, uh, provides between forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-five to fifty percent of the construction cost of the library.
Lucille, just out of curiosity, could a library, as they, it's been alluded, there might be some space at the elementary school. Could a library be placed in the elementary school?
In the elementary?
No, not in it, certainly not.
We own it.
We own the elementary school.
Certainly not?
Not, yeah, we own it.
Why not?
It's not enough room.
Well, say, say it was.
We could connect to it, perhaps. That's a possibility.
Well, there's a lot of room.
There is a lot of room, and it was...
There's a lot of empty rooms.
It was, well, the library was created to be a community-use space. I was there, I know.
But why don't we use it now?
I think that we started that conversation and, um, it never went anywhere.
You know, I think it might also, excuse me, be helpful to have a discussion early on in this process about the design and selection process. And, and the role of the owner's project man, manager. In any construction project, the first thing you need to do is to hire an owner's project manager. And they help you to think through the concepts, to, um, help you to choose an architect, and then, um, work with the town and the architect and the builders eventually to make sure the town gets the best bang for its buck. And, uh, that whole process is something that everybody here is gonna need to understand. It's, it's gonna be cumbersome, it's gonna be costly, and it's gonna, it's gonna be required. It's not an option. So, um, just, I think that's something we need to do early on.
I think that the goal would be that, you know, we continue to meet, and maybe if we could at least, um, be prepared for a full town meeting to get the funding for that.
Now, is that gonna be for each building, one of those is needed?
For the whole project. For the whole project.
All right, so what she's saying, though, is she's gonna, she's got it ready for the library, is that separate? And then there's one for the rest of this?
Well, this is a decision that she's asking where we're going.
I think it's really hard because they've been working at it for so long. But it's in isolation, like, so many of the things, and they certainly don't wanna lose what they have, the money-wise and so forth, and, but, I don't know where, we're in, I don't know if everybody else feels informed about what's been going on, so you could get support, you know, the best. I, I really didn't know what was going on, um, and I guess the selectmen don't, so, you, you know, we wanna, we, we certainly need a, a library for the town, and, but you gotta get the support from everybody. So we've gotta, I've gotta, we've gotta have more information to know more, so we can support, be supportive. And we certainly don't wanna see...
And if the state covers forty-five to fifty percent of that construction, it's not gonna be that way with the other buildings. So, yeah.
Yeah, and this, this...
Well, you don't, there might be grants out there for that.
I don't think it'll cover that much, though.
Well, maybe, but you don't know about it till you research the grant process.
Yes, Mr. Hilly.
Of course, we don't do that, actually, research grants.
Last time we met, we pretty much ruled out, or we did rule out, the common building. It was expressed by, uh, by those people that are most intimate with the needs of the other buildings that, uh, that, uh, the library, for example, the library trustees and, uh, and, and everyone involved with the library planning want a standalone building. The police department wants a standalone building. And, um, and that, and that leaves, still leaves a need for doing something with the horrendous situation we've got at the town hall. And, that doesn't mean that the original plan of having the library space occupy a part of that. That, certainly, that space can still be very well-used in a reconfiguration of the town hall.
Right.
So I think that we're talking ultimately about three different buildings and three different projects, and potentially even three different owner's project managers. And perhaps a ti, a difference in timeframe as well. I mean, we, as, uh, Mr. Sadik said a while ago, we're not, we're not gonna be able to do everything all at once. I, I just have one more thing.
Go ahead.
And that is that, um, we have, and we won't know until this all starts to, uh, to come to fruition, but we, we could very well have a source of funds available to the town that may even be sufficient to not have to deal with the whole concept of going to a debt exclusion or otherwise burdening the taxpayers. And that source of funds could be the, the host community fees that are gonna be paid by Americant, which is closing on the sixteenth of this month, on the Boston Beer Site. They plan to build right away a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, and eventually build nearly a million square feet of facility. And the host community agreement provides that they will pay the town initially, one dollar per square foot every year in addition to full boat taxes. So the taxes come into the general fund, uh, and get used for whatever it is that we need to use, use it for. But that, that potential nearly a million dollars a year, initially a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, could be set aside in, in a special, um, uh, fund for purposes of paying down debt service on building construction projects that you undertake. Now, I just throw that out there to, as to hopefully create, um, a thought in people's minds that this is not necessarily gonna be a taxpayer burden as we move forward. And, um, that could be very exciting. Now, it's, it, it hasn't happened yet, so...
It doesn't mean we can build a Taj Mahal.
No, it doesn't.
No, it's limited.
But at least it's some extra money that doesn't come in.
We still do, have to do, uh, due diligence, we still have to be conservative in our approach, and, uh, 'cause it, it is town funds, no matter how it comes to us. But, um, certainly, that could alleviate a lot of people's, get, get people thinking positively about meeting the needs of the town instead of thinking, oh, boy, oh, boy, another burden to the taxpayers. So, just a thought.
Lucille? I, I just wanted to point out that when we talk about the town's support for, um, say, even just for the library, uh, the town already gave their support back when they voted for the fifteen thousand dollar matching grant, matching, to match the tech, the state grant. They already supported the planning and design phase, and that's all we're trying to complete right now is the planning and design phase. That's already been approved by the town. So we do have their support for that, 'cause they gave us money to do it.
I mean, for the next step, too, of, with, you know, where a new library would be placed.
We're just trying to complete the design part, you know, like, what, what do we need in the floor plan? And what could that look like?
Well, I think, I think something else that we really need is, we really need a list of what locations are available to us if we're gonna go freestanding buildings. We need to know what's available for space. I mean, we really do need to have that before we start making plans for any kind of a building to see what kind of space, I mean, Jack is right, if you're gonna have a town hall, you're gonna have parking, we're almost all around it. You don't have this freestanding building, you're gonna have more than one entrance, you should have a lot of parking. We don't know what's available, what space is available. We should really need that information.
Oh, wait, go ahead, Paul.
We talked a little bit tonight about the school, what's available at the school, those classrooms. Can we use that school?
For temporary space.
That's it?
Yeah.
We, can we use that library as that central library?
I think we, we started to talk about that, uh, I don't know, about a year, nine months ago, I think.
With who?
We brought that up in a meeting about nine months ago, and it never went.
Do the school allow us to do it?
That's a conversation that we would have to have with the superintendent.
We'd be such a problem if it was regionalized.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I, I think it's worth, I, I think everything is worth looking at.
Everything's on tape.
I don't, I don't think anybody should say, oh, we're gonna get pushback. Well, Bob, we might get some pushback.
No, I don't mean that. I mean because of the situation with the classroom invasions.
I was just gonna say, you need separate access.
Since Columbine, Sandy Hook, and those access, people who really don't want general access to the schools.
But you can't, there are ways that you can separate it, and there are ways, and there are doors, and there are locks, and so forth, that it can be separated.
Again.
It's possible.
It was absolutely created that way. It's right in the front of the building. The office is right there, so they can see who's coming in and out of the building. To the right and to the left are two swinging doors that, that are, that can close. One section of students is way down on one side, and one section of students is way down on the other side. Those places in between are basically the nurses' area, and I think there might be a couple of classrooms that they use for, um, uh, projects and stuff like that.
It's supposed to be community school.
It, it was built and designed that way. It's a, it's a pretty big library. It's pretty big.
For an elementary school, it's a huge library.
And it was designed that way specifically.
So, I guess, to get it straight in my head, it was designed that way, do the students ever pass through that area? Are they, during their class day, do they pass through that? They do pass through that?
For lunch.
Just for lunch?
Well, there's, there's some class on one side, some classes on the other side.
Yeah.
So...
No, 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 no.
The gym is, the gym is dedicated there, so anybody in the fourth grade section has to come through that area to go to the gym, that common office area where the library is.
No, they're already on that side of the building. That gym in our area are already on that side of, are already on the third grade wing, there's no fourth grade there anymore. It's already on that third grade wing. Um, and I believe it's second, I think it's actually first, second, and third that have moved to that side of the building. Other side of the building is for pre-K and kindergarten.
And they don't have to go through?
I, they would have to go through, uh, the, that, the left-hand side of the building goes through for lunch, um, and the right-hand side of the building would go through for phys ed, but then that would not, that would just mean, like, there needs to be dialogue between, you know, um, the office and the library as to what's happening. I don't know if that's an answer. I mean, but certainly, it, it, like you said, it's...
The other thing, would you be able to segregate the parking areas, so, you know, when kids are getting out of school and release, and, or release times, that kids aren't being watched the entire time, while they are...
We'd have to do, to utilize it, but certainly, we should be able to utilize it when we have construction going on, or we need space, and, and be able to do that, um...
I think there might be a back door.
Long-term.
There is a back door, and you, there's actually parking in the back, 'cause the cafeteria is over there. So there's a small section back there.
And there's more land, I mean...
There is more land, but I think that this is probably a good place to stop. I'm, no, no, I mean, it's, at seven thirty, we have a lot on the table right now. I think that the board of selectmen should probably have a conversation, a side conversation with the libraries to find out exactly what direction that they're going into, so I think it should probably be on, on an agenda coming up. If we can, probably we convene after town meeting, or in three weeks from now, so we can talk about next, the libraries, and, um, also the senior center.
I won't break it.
It's very important. Absolutely. And you guys have grant opportunities, too. I know that Barbara had talked about that.
Uh, and we talked to a guy at our survey today, and it's an eight to twelve month process. So people at the COA don't have the time to go through that process.
But we could probably, I know that we could definitely help you with that. That's why we're here.
The next meeting, maybe, hands up, uh, what groups are we gonna get? So we can at least check it, check the book before you come, so we'll have some of the answers and...
Libraries?
Libraries, and COA.
Okay, libraries, okay.
Maybe the library should meet the selecting before the next meeting?
That's what I just said, yeah, definitely.
And that way, somebody can go through.
We can have a pretty full agenda.
We can't put it on the sixteen.
We can't, no, no, no.
Our agendas are pretty full.
I mean, to say which building should be first and all, it's hard.
Very hard.
We've all needed these buildings to be done.
For so long, that's why...
The town hall may be the oldest, but the police station may be, like we're saying, is the easiest.
Right.
I mean, we have a bestest within the town hall and everything, we've been working with it.
And there could be areas that we can combine, that we are not thinking of.
It's hard to say which one should go first.
We haven't decided yet.
I'll try and get some information together on the...
After town meeting?
Yeah. Madam Chair?
Yes, darling?
I'll try and get something together on design and selection process and the whole, whole assembly.
Yeah, I have, um, I'm at, at home as well, so I'll bring that for the next meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
No, 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 no.
Well, the next meeting.
See, I'm the town clerk, I go with the old-fashioned people.
I've been bothering you.
What's on the fourteenth? Oh, it's black. Okay, fifteenth is good.
It's very nice, you mind you?
Not the fifteenth, then.
Sixteenth.
Oh, okay.
I can't basically generate an answer.
All right, fifteenth, everybody? It's a Wednesday.
When, June fifteenth?
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
Yes. We have town meeting coming up, so I think I probably...
Six, about?
Six. What time? Six, okay. And Lucille, let's see if we can, um, if you can call Jack's office tomorrow and get, or Ally, and, um, get on the agenda for...
I wanna do that, then. So we're only opening, sixteenth is full. What day, you said? Eighteenth?
June.
June fifteenth.
No, for the library.
Oh, okay.
Talk to them, for the library. 'Cause everything else, we're pretty full.
June?
Well, we got, I...
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we're late enough, and so we could do, maybe, June, or fifteen.
The eighteenth is fine.
The eighteenth is fine.
Yeah.
We gotta come back for a shot thing.
'Cause we could come here for the eighteenth anyhow.
Okay, yeah.
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
May.
Of May, for the libraries.
Just the library.
I think that works for me.
Okay, perfect.
And what time is that again?
We're on the sixth, so, we're only gonna do that one article.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth. We do the one article, we're... We do the one article, we're on that.
Yeah, it's six o'clock, and by the time we're done, the article may pass.
All right, yeah, six, just six, six. This is right. We'll be done in five minutes on the other thing.
I had a note on here with my notes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Everybody got, since you've been on this, to come pick it up?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Ally will have one.